My name is Keith Romano. I like to call the team of the order. This is the inland wetlands commission meeting for town Monroe. It is September thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three, and the time is seven oh five P M. Well, everyone, please stand for.
I'd like to pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the republic, to which it stands, one nation, under our God, infinite as long with liberty and justice for all.
It's me.
I'll take a roll call. The members of the commission and staff present during tonight's hybrid meeting, please answer here or present, myself, Keith Romano, chairman, Eric Winstrom, vice chair.
Here.
Ryan Kelly, secretary.
Here.
Rick Smith.
Here.
Jim Stewart, who's a land engineer in the state of Connecticut. Uh, Rick Schultz, our planning and zoning transition manager.
They liked the new title.
Yeah.
Present.
Uh, Dylan, our planning and zoning administrator.
Present.
Cheryl Valerie, our planning and zoning and land well enforcement officer.
Present.
And Sarah Stroud, recording secretary.
Here.
Can you show the screen? Thank you. She's the only person. Online? Oh, there we go. All right. Okay, um. Before I start, uh, read our mission statement and how the meeting will proceed. Objective and purpose of inland wetlands commission is to provide for the overall protection and preservation of the inland wetlands and water courses within the town of Monroe. Meeting procedure, please note that this meeting is being conducted utilizing electronic equipment in compliance with state law, public act twenty-one dash one. As such, this meeting is being recorded and will be available to the public in compliance with state law. If you are attending remotely, please remember to mute your microphone while speaking. Anyone participating remotely shall state their name and title if applicable at the outset of each occasion that such person is speaking. All votes taken during which any member of this body or participating remotely shall be taken by roll call unless the vote is unanimous. The chat features will not be utilized nor considered during this meeting. In the normal course of our meetings, we will hear public hearings and other applications. The protocol for public hearings is to have an applicant make presentation through the commission during which, after which the commission will be asking the applicant questions. I ask that applicants keep their presentations concise as possible. The commission will then review town staff and other independent comments. The meeting will then be opened for public comment, unless at all comments made to the chair of commission. After any and all comments pro and opposition of a general nature are made, the applicant will be given opportunity to respond. Please keep comments or questions direct, or a timeline of three minutes may be imposed. It's not necessary that the applicant respond, but generally in their best interest to do so. There will be no further opportunities for new questions, new materials entered in as evidence or testimony during their response. Please keep all comments pro and con specifically to the inland wetlands related matters. Other applicants that do not involve the public hearing will follow similar format with the exception that there will be no public comments allowed. Meeting files are published agenda unless otherwise amended. Are there any changes to the agenda?
Let's carry on.
Okay. Um. Uh, this is a general public participation. Uh, this is a time for anybody, uh, in, in chambers or online wants to address the commission about something related to wetlands that is not, uh, currently an application in front of us or going to be in front of us in the near future. Anyone? Don't think so. All right. Uh, no regulated activities, deliberation session from which here I'm going to recuse myself for the rest of the meeting. Okay. All right, so we have I W C two thousand twenty-three dash four, uh, number one, four, four, six, two sixty Spring Hill Road, excavating and filling in a upwind review area for proposed future development of a building driveway and parking area. Eldorado Holdings LLC owner applicant Rose Tiso representative. You hear for that?
The public hearing closed the last meeting, Mr. Chairman, and, um, the commission asked that the staff draft a resolution. Um, and it right now on your, um, I just handed out, um, a, an updated draft resolution that includes the bond estimate, bond.
A motion, motion to approve as drafted in the draft resolution.
We have a second?
Second.
Any, uh, that consent? More than discussing? Any questions about? Okay, motion approved. Take a roll call. We don't need all.
Aye.
Aye, aye, aye. Aye, four ayes. Dennis. Okay. Okay. Moving on to public hearings, um, I W C two thousand twenty-three dash three, uh, number one, four, three, nine, one thirty-nine, one forty-one, and two oh one Turkey Roost Road, and thirty Cobbler's Hill Court. Proposed construction of ninety-nine single-family detached dwellings served by community wastewater treatment system with regulated activities in the upwind review area. Or you're ready associates out, see on that can Edwards and Associates, uh, L S represented. Uh, that's why I'm acting like I haven't done that already. All right, so this is a continuation from back on June twenty-fourth. Mr. Chairman? Yes.
Uh, we, we do have one more new exhibit to add to the record. It's exhibit number fifteen, uh, which is, uh, response to comments and the stormwater management report.
You get your slide.
Evening. Record, Jason Edwards, James Associates LLC, engineer surveyors located two thousand seven Stepney Road, East and. For you to, um, respond to comments we received, um, during and, uh, after, uh, the last presentation here, uh, just to remind you, this is ninety-nine, proposed ninety-nine single-family home development for our quarry site. The overall view here. You know, the entire development is, uh, you know, the entire point of development, all the new homes will all be located within the, within the existing remediated quarry. You've got wetlands down along the south side here, well, as a, you know, stream that comes this way, um, the pond actually flow this direction here, absolutely here. The, the red lines represent the one hundred foot step back and regulated area. See that? All of the homes are outside of that one area. So we have, we have a very big area that is the pond, the drainage, uh, water quality pond here, and then, um, this existing driveway that we're going to be improving, um, in its living location. Uh, one of the comments from, uh, both third-party review and, and the town engineers, well, staff and commission was a concern about, uh, we had an outlet drainage system that was located much closer to the property line, I'll show you where it was. We've, uh, we've blackfired that, uh, to push it up the hills, but now we're roughly two hundred feet from the wetlands with that outlet, and it's also controlled, uh, by, um, a small, uh, not small, uh, it's more or less a water quality based in a showered hole like I said, things would be called. Um, so this is just a show of comparison. The, the original drainage design came out here and outletted right by this property corner, headed into this wetlands. Now we brought it up and are rocking it out, so it'll be then discharged into this pond and then overflow from the level spreader, and then she'd flow down the hill, uh, towards this, this one wetland here. So that's one, uh, it moves that outlet away from the property line, which is a concern, but also eliminates that, uh, very activity, so we start all up with the surface area. We've been working, uh, with the town engineer, James DeMaile, has one, um, responding to his comments. The, the left is, this, this is just to graphically kind of show you the number that we've addressed here. Uh, the left was the forecase, the original document, and this on the right is the last round of comments we received. Uh, we have responded to those, uh, and my opinion, I've addressed them. Uh, James has been out on leave since we submitted these, so he has not, uh, he hasn't listened to last few comments, but we feel we've addressed them and I. On the left is the last email that we got from James and comments, um, that's in reference to our, our very minor technical comments. One that I thought we should, I would touch on. Uh, I highlighted here, uh, this is in reference to the, and just to step back one step here to, one of the, the issues that was brought up, um, by, uh, the commission and the reviewers at the last hearing was that we were utilizing that existing pond for, uh, stormwater detention. Uh, we're no longer doing that because of the whole drainage design so that we've distributed the water equally out of the different basins. Uh, so you had, we had gone through that process and actually reducing the water flow through the pond last week, and that was his comment here. Uh, he felt that everything looked pretty good, but he wanted to be sure that we didn't, uh, take too much water out of that pond, you know, C two in our design. So our response to that, uh, some spell back here. This response letter was submitted to him. I don't know if it's part of the record for everybody else, but it went to him. I have a copy I can give to you if you want to get it on the record.
Is that what, dated eight thirty, is that what I see?
Yeah, eight thirty, so we got comments from him on eight twenty-eight. We responded on eight thirty to him with plans and a new report. And this chart here is out of our stormwater report to latest one, and you can see this last column here just shows the delta between the, uh, the existing runoff volume and the proposed runoff volume, and you see that we're, we're very close on all these numbers now. We're within, you know, I think at the very most to, of P O C two, we're, you know, almost even all the way through. Whereas we had about a ten to twenty percent difference in the last year. So even that out, we feel we're, uh, we're not at risk to deprive that weapon of any, uh, detrimental. Um, so that, that was really the bulk of the engineering, well, we addressed a lot of engineering comments, most of them were technical, we've concerned with James. I think he's going to issue some sort of response to that when he gets back, I, so, uh, but we don't think we are with that. So this is, uh, the comments from, uh, that is staff, Cheryl, uh, that was presented to us at the last hearing. So it's the same letter that, that was submitted, and we prepared a, a response report to this letter. Start going through that. Uh, you guys all have copies this way?
That's good.
Yep, that's the thing. Uh, so there's, the response narrative was prepared by, by James Associates, but we also have reports from Davidson Environmental, uh, Stephen Danzer, Ph D, Associates LLC, and Environmental Land Solutions LLC, um, they're three environmental professionals. Uh, Steve, uh, Danzer, and Matt Pop, uh, from Environmental Land Solutions, the whole few, Eric, kind of the application for like, um, not here. Their reports are quoted in here, uh, they, they come up and speak on some issue. So I went through and kind of pulled apart the, uh, the comments from Cheryl and broke them down into responses. If you read through the report online, my responses are in green. Um, I don't want to go through here and read every sentence of my report, but, you know, the definitions of prudent and feasible, I think, are important, um, to make sure that, you know, they're understood as, you know, what, what are, what we have to satisfy, you know, we have to, we have this definition here prudent and feasible, uh, so you're good to you, but those are critical in analyzing, you know, how our alternatives are, um, or how we came up with our alternatives and how we think they are, uh, how we think we have the most prudent and feasible alternative. Okay, so this is, um, you know, a section for me, but, you know, it does, the, the regulations do not require that an alternative is less, that an applicant provide an alternative that is less impactful. It requires that the applicant demonstrate why the current plan is the most feasible and prudent time, and also achieve desired outcome. So that, that's very important to, to keep in mind that, you know, we have to just, we have to demonstrate that what we're proposing is the most prudent and feasible alternative for what we want to construct. Not that it's less than what we want to construct or, or necessarily less impactful. This is an excerpt from the, the report, but, uh, he has an analysis of the alternatives. Um, but he stated in there is that there, there are no significant impacts to wetlands or water courses on this current plan that we have proposed. I'll let Steve get on and speak to that in a few minutes. Um, this is, we've now provided in the latest plans, I think, a total of five alternatives. Um, this, this alternative S one A was part of, you know, the original submission, it hasn't changed. I, I've added some notes here just to clarify, you know, what the impacts are. Uh, you've got the ninety-nine homes where we, where we currently propose them, uh, that needs to show a, a, a development on the Albersport parcel. Uh, that's going to result in a thirty acre loss of open space, uh, as well as additional regulated area impacts. This is, um, two A, two, uh, one, one B, sorry. Uh, again, uh, this was part of the original plan set, but we are proposing on this one, uh, a series of, um, townhouses or apartment buildings in this area where the existing development is proposed, or new, our current proposal is proposed, as well as the same, uh, apartment complex up here on the north Collers piece. This development, there would be, uh, it would probably be done under A three G, there'd be no requirement for open space, so, you know, we basically lose all the open space as well as we have additional impacts on, on regular area.
Tell us how it feels.
Uh, this is, this is one of the newer, uh, new alternatives, I just want to see. Uh, this layout was actually designed and, and proposed back in two thousand and ten. Uh, it's the same number of proposed units, but, uh, septic areas relocated over here to the large sand bed. Uh, you've got a different layout here, the, uh, smaller, uh, to, this would also, uh, subdivision to the north, it was also proposed at that same time, so you can show that as a part of that alternative as well. This plan requires about five acres of additional plastic to cover out this back and to make room for those units, and then also have an actual filling of wetlands here around this point. This is S one D. Um, and this one, we actually took, uh, a, a design that we had that was done years ago for eighty-three homes. And this results in very little change in, um, in the regular area in that, stormwater basins are all generally in the same place. They, they don't, uh, they don't shrink drastically, um, you know, there's very little difference, uh, mainly because the, the bulk of the regulated activity on this property is access driveway, and there's no other way to get up here, it's going to come up the way we have it. Uh, you've got one point one of the total, the total impact is roughly one twenty-five acres, roughly, in fact, one point one of that is the access driveway. Uh, so you, you can do a reduction in, in units here, but you're still going to need stormwater basins down on that south side, uh, you can't do that. Um, so we're showing that, and then if that was to be the case to, to make up for the financial loss of the units on the, the main development, the developer would also go forward and tell them on the cost of the piece separately. Um, this, we, S one E, um, this is our same ninety-nine minute layout, but we, uh, one of the comments from staff was could we explore a way out through this other driveway? So we looked at that, uh, it's, it's very steep, narrow, there's wetlands on both sides, and there's also a sightline issue that the driveway itself, that exit, I don't believe we can make that work. So this is just a comparison chart I put together. And what I did, I, I took out of that one point one acres of, uh, regulated areas from each of the, the proposals and then just gave a breakdown of the number of units, the open space, and the regulated activity, less the, the, the common activity that would be the same line to develop. And the, uh, current one really is, uh, in my opinion, far and above the most prudent and feasible alternative. I mean, eighty-one acres of open space, you've got only zero point four acres of regulated activity. All the other options, you're, you're losing significant amounts of open space, and even the, the smaller number of units, you still have the same zero point three acres of, of upwind activity. Uh, that's relative, I'm going with space you can lose, I think that, um, relatively minor difference in the regulated activity. Uh, so this goes into. Yeah, this is, um, a, a portion of Stephen's hand report. Uh, he speaks to the importance of, of open space and, um, and avoidance of mitigation strategy. I don't need that anything he wants to come up and discuss all of that now. So it, it's worth, I'd suggest that you all read that. This is, which, uh, uh, this is a, a response to the specific question that was asked about the accessway. Uh, this is a blow up of that secondary access if we were coming that way. Uh, the, to make the, the drains work there, you'd have to fill this whole, um, this whole area here, uh, you know, the fill extends over the property line into the wetlands. Um, it's, it's just not a, and, and again, the sightlines do not work there, so it really is not a. Uh, this is, this is, um, it was a comment about the, um, what the, the current site conditions are, as we say, uh, you know, we would say that the, the site would be reverted to meadow, um, but there was one clarification on that, so Matt Pop put together a report and description of the current site conditions. You want to go up and tell them that? Um, so, uh, this breaks down the entire site and the different, um, uh, site conditions throughout. And this is, uh, just a visual of, uh, Matt's, and this was accompanied by Matt's, uh, report. You can see that the entire, in this entire development area is within that former quarry. And he also identifies where the, uh, the box turtle habitat aggregation area would be, as well as the, uh, various areas of plantings and whatnot around the detection basis. So this is in response, we go back to the slide, we should talk, we should talk about that, these alternatives, are they acceptable to you guys? If you guys want to stop at any point.
Yeah, just for a second here. That's okay. Go ahead. I have a comment. So I think one B is not really feasible, feasible plan, but I'm happy overall that you've taken a good look. I think the alternative driveway, that's a true option. I'm glad you looked at it. I agree with you. Um, one question, and that maybe it's for us, is when you designate open space, how long is designated open space? What, what prevents you from coming back and putting in another development at that other road?
Be, uh, in perpetuity, yes.
And, and I just want to make sure, because it just, the words were not clear to me.
No.
Okay.
Yeah, Commissioner Chris Russo with the Minnesota Z U L S, we would do a, um, we would do a restriction on there that would be in perpetuity, that give a court on the land records. So no matter who owned it, you know, it could transfer fifty times, and it wouldn't matter that deed, that, that would, restriction would be on there.
Okay, those are the questions I had, I don't know what you guys. So I think we're good on that then?
Yeah. So I'll proceed then. So. I have a free here, I should have put the problem page in front of it. Um, this is in reference to the box turtle and, uh, the E, uh, and the B designation. So we responded to this, uh, this is, you know, we basically request for, for habitat study, so we, we, uh, did prepare one, let me get, um, that I want to just note, that is not a requirement of regulations, uh, of town or of, of deed at this point, um, it's something that we have to go for at the stormwater permit projects, construction, and, and that time they very well may, uh, but at this stage, it's not something that would be required, but we didn't go ahead and, and do that anyway. Uh, Matt Pop, who, uh, he, he prepared a full study, um, Eric Davidson also prepared a, just a response to that comment.
Keep it simple, God, the other commissioner. Database of landing is a study, and why wouldn't we get it done now? It's my thing. Pete, you, you contend that, uh, there's no study needed at this point, but it will be needed later at the stormwater, uh?
Actually, uh, any disturbance over ten acres, I believe, no, I'm not positive on the acres, but we have the red to stormwater, A B stormwater.
Good evening, Matthew Pop, landscape architect, special weapons scientist and environmental land. I originally was, uh, retained back in two thousand, I think the end of two thousand and two, prepare a landscape plan for this site, so I've been coming here for twenty years or so, I don't know if it's more than twenty, twenty years. Um, uh, since there is, uh, box turtles observed on the site, when the project goes in first of our discharge permit, the state, the state will require, uh, certain, um, uh, conditions regarding box turtles, probably like fifteen or twenty of them or so, and, uh, it's pretty stringent, uh, was basically walking the site, uh, before the construction starts, uh, the, the perimeter, uh, wildlife fencing, I've been actually walking the site every morning, uh, to, um, see if there's box turtles. Um, I've done this in other projects. I do have a stormwater discharge, I mean, a scientific collector's permit that actually allows specifically for me to relocate box turtles. I'm sure Eric Davidson has one too. Probably want that for the record.
It's in the record, yeah.
Okay, yeah. So it won't be a study that's to be done, it won't be one, they would require, you know, the, the state will assume that the box turtles are there.
Right, so then my question is, what, you know, because I, I, I appreciate that you're saying we don't have, uh, the ability to do that or to require that, but why wouldn't you start it now as opposed to getting off?
Probably down the road and finding out that there's some problem. I think you're, what I've read, the plan, um, and I got to tell you that it wasn't in the appendix, uh, but the, the.
What, what you alluded to in your report.
Matt, you, uh, it was very good, and I appreciate what you're saying.
I'm not a herpetologist.
I don't know how many sand piles are needed for their, for their, uh, eggs, and, you know, and, and I appreciate that you know what you're doing, but so does DEEP, and that's why we have to, uh, we have to.
Rely on them to do something like this, and I don't understand why you wouldn't start it now with DEEP.
Uh, well, they don't, when we want to submit an application for final of plants to them, you know, they don't want to get drawings now that are finalized. Basically, there's erosion control plants they want a review, and under, on the application, there's a box, you know, is there any, you know, danger, threat, and species special concern there, that will get checked and ones that. that will get checked, and once that gets checked, and then these conditions will come into effect.
I'm just cognizant that the box turtle is not active between...
We're going to assume they're there.
Halloween and April 1st, so...
Regardless, though, we're assuming that they're there. You know, if there was a fertile pool there on the site, which there isn't, I would assume certain wildlife would be there, even if it's not, it'll take time to look at it, so we're assuming that it's there. The price is up. We had a project in Milford that had the sand pile in the middle of it, it was actually a small quarry, and that's where, right in the middle of the quarry, that's where the box turtles kind of, and the state had built, kind of, developed it around them, so that's kind of why we're proposing, and just a few sand piles.
So where is the plan? It was supposed to be appendix, the appendix.
I think the whole plan was submitted as attached to...
We, actually, we can go, maybe that, okay, just go over the plan.
You want your, I have your full plan submitted.
There's one that you have up there.
Quick question. You made the comment that Monroe Wetlands regulations nor requirement, Connecticut DEEP.
Can you go find that?
It's not a requirement, but normally, we don't come across a species of special concern, so I think this is a little bit of an extending circumstance, but beyond that...
I'm sure there's a section that asks, because we can ask for stuff we want.
There's even in our regulations, unextending circumstances, we can extend our review behind, beyond the 100-foot upland review area. Again, this is up to you, but I would contend that our regulations also do talk about wetland associated wildlife and wetland functionality, including wildlife habitat, so it's not something that's not in our regulations at all, that we don't look at wildlife at all, it's just, this is a species of special concern, and normally, we don't get that involved with wildlife particularly, but...
Just for the record, we did do one, it is in there. I was only stating...
I'm not saying you didn't do it, I'm just saying that that's kind of why...
No, I'm just trying to understand the rules, yep.
This is a special concern.
Kind of the ideal time for us to assume that box turtles are on the site.
Yeah, I just want, I just want assurance that the NDDB, you know, the fact that it's on the NDDB, but...
What is that?
That was handed in by Bob Thomas, she sent us a letter.
She's the chair of the...
Conservation Commission, I think?
Conservation.
Conservation and water resource.
Did we all get this, or?
Yep. So that's an extra diversity database, Matt, we take up the case every, twice a year, in the first phase of June, December, and those are areas for other species of special concern. Concerning, they change drastically sometimes, sometimes, you know, there might be a large area that's highlighted, and then next time, there's none. So, and you can't, you don't know what they are unless you submit an application to them, and when you submit, when they come back to you, a lot of times, they don't tell you what is present, they'll just say there's no impact, or there is something that's present, it's like relocated a sand pile, we're going to dam here, they kind of said what that was, and we relocated that.
Well, this is not related to stormwater, it has to happen as one of the inputs to the stormwater.
Yes.
And I'm saying that you can e-file, and if I were you, because I'm a program, I was a program manager, I'd want to get that done and out of the way now, as opposed to getting into it November, December, and finding out, oh, well, you know, we need to see these turtles active, and we have to wait till April to do, to collect some data or some other, I, I'm just saying, proactively, you should go after it now. I can't tell you to do that, but I don't know why you wouldn't.
There's actually nothing to do at this stage, because the conditions are during construction, so that's what the conditions lead to.
I might just ask Steve to answer, professional wetland scientist, just to add just another layer of clarification. DEEP, when you say wildlife study, it, we're past the stage of a wildlife study, what is customarily done is an inquiry to the database to find out whether or not this species is known in this area, we already know the answer.
Yeah.
So what they will do, probably in what Matt is saying, is offer us a list of conditions that are generally in the realm of mitigation, in other words, do this, do that, do this, do that, but the point of the study, there's no real study to be done, because we're all operating under the assumption that the box turtle is there, so that, that's...
I get that, but, but I also get the flavor here, and the flavor is not necessarily appreciated, where you say reports of a box turtle basking in ponds is erroneous. Don't tell me it's erroneous, you don't know who made that observation, and we may have a picture.
You could, you can say it may be erroneous, but, you know, later on, Eric Davidson, who's not here, said a single box turtle was observed, and we all, yeah, we all know that it's there, but I'm just, I just, I want to work together on this thing, and I don't understand why you wouldn't get this out of the way.
Well, like I said, there's nothing...
Yeah, but it would help your, wouldn't it help your mitigation plan?
Our mitigation plan, what, I don't want to speak from that, but what he said was, he designed a mitigation plan with the assumption that that's what the DEEP is going to tell him anyway.
Let's clarify it.
But the DEEP not going to get a response from the DEEP until you submit its stormwater discharge application?
Wow.
And they're not going to look at it, you know?
And Commissioner, what we're trying to say is, we're being conservative, and we're just, we're just assuming, and we're not waiting for that, we're just assuming that they're there, and Matt's developed this plan, so he's got it, he's ready, and if, should they be found, then, you know, we're already ready for it, so we're not taking the risk of, we don't have a mitigation plan, we're proposing it now, we want to make sure that we're covered, so, and we're expecting that's what's going to happen, but, you know, should be extra cautious, we are, we're proposing that right now.
Jason under, for the record, DEEP, we cannot submit this stormwater permit application until we have local approval, because they don't want something that isn't approved locally, if they review it, and then you change it again, then they have to review it again, so they don't want that extra layer of force, because they're on risk that too, so it's , it's order of operations, I guess.
If you want this to be on your critical path, well, for the problem, for private, I appreciate it.
I would just make one comment, because I, I'm still, in review of everything, I'm still reviewing it. I'm the one that saw the box turtle. It was not a painted turtle, it was a box turtle, and it was down right by the road, and not in the middle of the pond, it was on the edge of the pond. Further down, he says, quote, "Box turtles are not a wetland-dependent species, but sometimes use wetlands for cooling and hydrating during the hotter summer months, June. There is evidence that certain populations of box turtles migrate annually to the edges of wetlands' hibernation." So, I saw it. And it sounds like you guys are on top of it, and will be taken care of, I just wanted to make that point.
On a site like this, I'd probably be shocked if there was a box turtle on site, they're tough to find, but when you have, like, the open spaces, 80 acres or so, you know, in this area, so that would be something that would, you know, kind of automatically kind of be checked out. So next time you see one, take a picture of it, yeah, I think.
I don't, it was quick.
If you find another one, you want to know.
It's ran by?
Anyway.
These turtles.
Okay, without a, want to continue?
Yeah, I'm okay, I'll, I, I just want you to continue with the plan, I think getting the plan approved early on, I didn't see that it had to be connected to a, on the e-file, it didn't say that needed to have a, an adjacent storm, they may say that later, that, yeah, okay, but, it's okay. You got to understand, from my viewpoint, I didn't get the appendix, page 90, or whatever, it goes up to page, what you sent us goes up to page 80, 81 is not there, so there's, that's it, production plan, I, you know...
I'm not sure if you have this, I kind of prefer the, like, highlights, the open space. It was observed, so... So, here's the kind of, the space up through here. This area right here, it's kind of a meadow down here, a goldenrod meadow over here. Here, it's kind of a thickets, and that right here, it's kind of the area that most likely you'd find the box turtles, so again, it could probably be, you know, up in a wooded areas. But the main thing is, during construction...
Yes, you don't run them over.
You don't want to run them over, if we find them, we want to put them, relocate them to the proper side of the wildlife barrier, just so that we don't impact them.
Do you go the first one up the road every morning?
Not going to be. So there, but there were, again, DEEP, they're not going to offer us the conditions to require. Yeah, and I think there is some, there's some, a plan, and those notes are pretty similar to what we, what we expect to get from the DEEP.
It's good, I just thought getting approved ahead of time is probably a prudent thing, but...
But you can't.
No, that portion of it, I believe you can. The NDDB's part of it, and I, like I said, I got to call into the, to DEEP, to clarify with, you know, because they're kind of busy, but...
So this is Matt's wildlife information that he gathered. And just a key point is that there was no listed NDDB species, plants or animal was observed during that. The study did...
Yeah, but I had it in my, in the area when I was a kid, I used to go hunting for them, they're very elusive, it's not like, you know, you got to just...
Box turtles?
Yeah, yeah, box turtles, yes.
We're accounting for it, so if they're there, we're making the plans to accommodate them.
Consider them pets and put them in a fenced area, and they always got out. Of course, my parents might have let them out instead.
And that a lot of things to worry about.
Yeah.
So we're to, again, the box, box turtle, we'll go past that. Okay, so this is where I'm finding, and this is the chairman that asked us to just explain how we satisfy the various requirements of the regulations, the town and our own regulations. So part of those, majority of them are probably in Eric Davidson's initial impact report that we submitted, so... So this, do you guys want me to go through each one of these and call them out? I mean, I...
I can, since I don't want to waste everybody's time by reading off the report.
It's really just...
I think, yeah, I think if you can just give us quick highlights, that's fine, because I, I think we got this, what, two days ago, the whole response, right? We got it on the 5th, received on the 5th.
It should have been about a week ago.
I'm sorry, about a...
It's Friday.
Is that?
Friday.
Friday, yeah, so I guess, how much have you guys had an opportunity to dive through this yet?
Not enough.
Not enough.
And James is out as well.
Is there a timeline for James' return?
I think, I think the Monday after, I think the 25th, I think he's back, is that, do you think that's right, the 25th? He's, he's off next week, is my understanding.
So, yeah.
Yeah, so if you just breeze through it, and you give these guys...
Yeah, because they're going to need to, they need to dive through all this, so...
That's what I don't want.
Third party to something as well.
Quick highlights, because they're going to, we're not going to be able to go through all this today, and they're going to have time to review it, so...
So, yeah, I'll kind of jump right to the end, I think, you know, these highlighted points on each, these are parts of the report that we've submitted, quote, which we've worked in front of, and I highlight the key elements that do address each of those conditions. One that I just wanted to stop on was, you know, that's this one. You know, this comment speaks about the recommendations that is possible for alternatives to reduce impact in regulated areas. So I kind of went through a history here of this project, but it was submitted in 2010, originally approved, approval expired, in 2022, December of 2022, we submitted the same plan and application that had previously been approved. We received a lot of feedback and decided to withdraw that application and revise to bring everything up to current. We've updated stormwater treatment design, we've done additional, a lot of additional analysis of the wastewater treatment facilities, we've done four new environmental assessments, new landscape designs, and now the biggest is we're adding a 31 acre of open space on the Converge Quarry, that's a developable parcel that's high value. You know, that demonstrates that we, we receive recommendations, and we now created an alternative that, that's addressed those. Again, we've had now, current design was submitted earlier this year, we've got town staff review, we've got third-party review, they provide the comments, we've made numerous revisions to address those comments, we've now, you know, revised the stormwater designs to far exceed the DEEP guidelines for water quality control and pollution removal, we've added additional LID components, we've got rain garden, like, to swale, protect the purpose area, we've relocated stormwater outlets, provides better separation to the wetlands, we've created a safe area for the box turtles, we've created some areas for bird nesting, birdhouses, and we're enhancing the upland review area, 3,600 plants. And just to speak to the level that the applicants willing to go through to try to protect the environment and the wetlands, it's, we've got three, three highly regarded, qualified environmental professionals on the team here that are all assisting in making this design as much, as, and protect the wetlands as much as we can. So I just wanted to put that out, there's, there's been a lot of effort put into this to get to this point, and there has been a lot of other alternatives and a lot of considerations to make sure the wetlands are priority. I think the rest of this will be, you know, if you guys have questions, we're happy to answer, and we can get back to the next timeline. Any questions?
I do have one, one request, I said the birdhouses and everything else, but what about a bat house, or two? You thought about putting a bat house or two out there? Don't you think it would be nice to have, take care of the mosquitoes?
Matt and Pop, we could, that probably be good, that you'd get a clubhouse?
Yeah, right, exactly, by the, by the rain garden or something?
Buildings, or there's... That would be good, there's that many bats these days.
Well, that's, we want to promote that, so, just asking if you would consider it, I know I can't demand any bat house.
I think we could say you can put some in.
Thank you. How many other questions?
You have some requests.
Yeah, question, Tom. I'm looking at sheet S2, the detention pond, what is it, 2, seems like most of your detention ponds are pretty well away from the wetlands, this one and the settling basin are, are pretty much right up against the wetlands. Can you just briefly, just talk to me about why those, those need to be so close, why they, why they can't be relocated? Where the runoff is, is coming from and such?
This is the watershed map to do that one. We've got the settling basin, which you mentioned, which is over here, we've got the pond, the larger pond here, and then two smaller ones, and then the final outlet over here. The locations are, as you know, they're somewhat dictated by the geography and the climate, because you have to get to a little, and part of the proximity to the wetlands is the size of them as well, we're retaining, detaining a lot of water here, so this one has to be as large as it is to, to help alleviate the pond, existing pond being used for retention, but we've got water that comes down that's in here, it's diverted around each side, there's swale that runs each way all the way around, so this left south side comes all the way around here to the settling basin, and then discharges a portion of its water out... So this left south side comes all the way around here to the settling basin and then discharges a portion of its water out into the wetland here. And then passes the rest of it along this basin, this basin that overflows into this wetlands.
Is it, it's, the water, some of it's discharging and there's an overflow? Is that how it works?
Yeah, there's a, let me get to the sheet that's got the detail. There's a spillway that goes out. We retain the water quality volume and spillway discharge it out. So we have settlement basin is here, water comes down here. We have the settlement overflow that passes then through driveway and then over this basin. So we have a certain amount of water coming this way to try to maintain the same amount of water basically going over here that there is now.
So there's an outlet control structure?
There's a some sort of, I actually don't recall exactly what this is, but they're in fact the outlet flow control. And that goes to here. There is also a logistic pipe under this driveway, so we have to be conscious that we can't put more water over here and then, you know, cause too much water to be passing through this pipe. So we wanted to keep that, that flow through that pipe is going to stay as it is now. We're not increasing or decreasing that. So anything that would exceed that water quality volume that comes across here into this pond.
And you couldn't, and you couldn't move that, move that pond up along the swale that the.
Settling basin.
Settling basin up along the swale and lengthen the discharge? Lengthen the pipe?
I mean, we could look into it, I suppose. Yeah, I mean, it's, I don't know how the great team works if we.
I'm just.
Yeah, I mean, we can take a look at it. It's not something I've looked at before. I don't know if Dave or Rob is back here.
No, I'm thinking, Dave York on J A versus Associates, I think we could move it uphill. It's not picking up a lot of water.
I mean, you can only get so far, so we're not going to be.
I'm just, I'm just talking about it. It just seems like the rest of the, the rest of the site is fairly well separated, and these are two locations that are, that are right up against the wetlands. And then the other, the other basin. So that's collecting runoff from where in the, in the development?
Which basin is the one?
Yes, yes.
That is, there's a pipe. Water coming down and here, I believe that's the only hint to that. So you've got, you know, the piping that comes down this way, and then there's some, I believe this actually pitches back in here too.
Yeah, Dave, Dave York on the applicant. Keep in mind that both the areas in which these two, this stilling basin and the larger detention pond, these are areas that have been disturbed for 30 years. I mean, these and and the wetlands adjacent to them, the wetland below the smaller basin, if you go to Eric Davidson's report, you know, that was, they ran bulldozers right through the middle of it, and you go look at it today and you can see that same effect. And the one to the right hand side of the road is the same way. There's no topsoil there. There's no natural vegetation. The entire area has been disturbed, including the adjacent wetlands. This, we're not, we're not dealing with a natural environment here. And, you know, the way I see this is, once the ponds get constructed, the development gets built, these areas between the pond, pond itself and the adjacent wetlands will finally be able to restore themselves.
No, no, I understand. I'm just looking into the future, 50 years into the future, where hopefully the wetlands are restored and 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 hoping that we can, you know, move them and have some upland review area. So I mean, that pond too.
Mr. Stewart, I won't be here to check it out.
Me neither. Me neither. And I'm just wondering if that other pond can get, can get wrapped, you know, more to the south.
Oh, I, yeah, I think.
You know what I'm saying? Because it's not discharging to the south, so.
Which pond are you talking about?
Number, number two.
The large one?
Yeah.
So you're saying to keep the the north end away?
Well, where the discharge is.
Right.
To give it, to give it some additional space there.
But if you go look at that area, it's.
I understand that, but it's going to be beautiful when you're done, right?
Yes.
If you're only considering the discharge, we could also slide that around and have it discharge out on the east side.
Yeah, we could flop the discharge.
The further, yeah, I mean, the further the discharge away from the wetlands is. At least it is to me. So if that's, if that, if that's something you can do, I think it'd be beneficial. Or or, you know, multiple discharges, I, you know, I mean, whatever works for you, if you need to, you know, make sure it's tight. Okay, thank you.
Anybody else have questions or comments right now?
If there's no questions, we'll, you guys have some time to review.
Okay. I should ask, in terms of James and his questions, the questions that have been, or answers that have been sent back to him, if he's returning, he's off next week. Returning the following week, that's probably the week that we're scheduled to meet.
The 27th.
It's a loaded, loaded question, but like, is that enough time for him to address those and for us to convene on this topic?
I, I, I'm expecting that to be the case.
I did have a conversation with James before he left for leave, and he indicated that as long as he gets everything digitally, he's planning to look at it. Obviously, that could change once we have the meeting, so, but that was what his plan was. Okay, not going to.
So when, what does he do that?
I think the 25th.
The 25th.
I'm pretty sure.
And the next scheduled meeting is on the 27th. Okay, so.
The packets would go out, you know, Friday before, Thursday, Friday before that, so.
So why don't we, for the moment, assume that he does review things remotely?
Right.
And then we'll get hopefully some feedback on him on the 25th. If there's some big obstacle that he sees, then I think if we can communicate to them, hey, there's X, Y, and Z. Maybe at that point, then we can discuss having continuous to a later date, but at least for now, let's assume that we're all still in a good place.
Keep in mind, he's going to review this to T and Z too, so he's, if, you know, we get to the next board, he's going to review it again. So if there's minor stuff that he needs to pick up, then.
Right, well, hopefully we want to get this.
Yeah, mind it.
And maybe we.
Yes.
Yeah, so.
Yeah.
Well, I think we should continue with that by assuming
what we've discussed previously happens, and then we'll continue at the next meeting, and we can hopefully draw by that.
So we're going to continue the public hearing to the next meeting?
Continue to the next.
Do you want to use the public? I think it's a third party.
Yeah, is there, are there any? Any comments by, oh, there's nobody here other than you guys, but are there any people online that want to make any comments? I guess, Russell, anyone?
Second party.
It's your consultant. Yep.
Yeah, I'm your consultant.
Yes.
I I've reviewed everything. And I don't want to waste the commission's time with going through each step, but I think the applicant has addressed most of my concerns very, very adequately. I'm glad that the N D B B database came back. That the box turtle is, is the only critter that that's, that's the reason why the site is listed. I have them in my yards, but don't tell anybody because I don't want my house to have that big thing over it. You know, the, I'm especially concerned about the pond, and I said that at the last meeting. And they've addressed that by redesigning things so that the pond doesn't become a detention basin. And they've also addressed, and there is a section in their application and their handout where they, they also address groundwater depletion, and they show how groundwater won't, won't suffer because of the change, and the pond won't be depleted either. It won't be dried out. One thing that was important to me was the dam, and and they did answer my questions that the dam is, is permitted and, but the dam is low, low emergency status. In other words, if the dam failed in a hundred year storm, DEEP doesn't believe that there would be catastrophic damage downstream. So that, that, that made me feel a lot better. Feasible and prudent alternatives, I agree with them on, on the way they're reading the regulations, but the commission may want to think about less homes, some, a little bit of open space within the development itself. But that's up to the commission if that's really feasible and prudent. I don't know if it is, because I don't know the cost of bringing a water line all the way that they have to bring it. But but all in all, they've addressed my concerns, and and I believe James, James had a lot of concerns, and I, and last time I talked to him, he, he was satisfied that most of his concerns were addressed, but he should come back and make that, that statement for himself. But but overall, I really don't have any issues with, with this application, other than I looked at their calculations for pollution, you know, nitrogen, phosphorus into the pond, and those calculations showing that, show that there'll be less pollution than what's going there now, but the question for the commission is, once you build all these homes and everybody starts putting fertilizer and weed killer on their lawns, and now we have to salt the road. Is that, has that been addressed in those calculations? Or are those calculations based on what's there now, which isn't muss? And I, I think what one of the commissioners said about moving a discharge pipe, especially at the entrance to pond, is a good thing to consider. Especially because where the road goes in over the pond, there's going to be a lot of salt used because it goes uphill. And I'd like the applicant to address that to the commission in the future of how that will be addressed. But again, overall, those are my concerns, and I really don't have anything major to to fuss about.
You guys want to comment on anything you brought up now, or?
I think we might just reserve our comments for, you know, next, next year. Want to think about what, about that before I respond.
Okay, can I, can I ask Russell? Can you get the recommendation for fewer homes for the benefit of adding some open space? Can you just illustrate for me just the, the impact, the negative impact on that number of homes in the wetlands specific? And just so, I want to make sure I understand what that, what that, what problem that's solving by having fewer homes in, in the plan? Does that make sense?
Yes, absolutely. It creates a less intense development, and anything that's developed there will impact the wetlands. Not significantly, as you said, I don't believe there'll be a significant impact, but to say there will be no impact is not reasonable and it's not real. There, there will be an impact. The, the thing that the commission needs to understand is what will that impact be? And that impact will be from stormwater, right? So if you have less homes, less intensity, that, that may create less impact to the wetlands. But again, I'm throwing it out there because it is a feasible and prudent alternative to have less development. But that's up to the applicant to look at and, and state why that, that doesn't make any sense. Now, the applicant has already stated that less homes wouldn't make any difference whatsoever because the stormwater calculations wouldn't change. I, I don't really agree with that, but I don't think it's a significant enough issue to argue about it. But I'm throwing it out there for the commission to, to decide whether that's important to them or not.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any questions?
Just real quick, so the letter you, the letter you had from DEEP was computer generated. Which is not neither here nor there, but did you ever actually talk to somebody to, to, to verify that it was just box turtles? I just wanted to clarify, you know, make sure that Russell's statement is correct.
Could there be other endangered species there?
Not according to the DEEP registry. What that does is it pulls anything that DEEP has, you go on, they have a registry, so that's the process.
Yeah, I, I couldn't find that it was just box turtles, so I'm asking you, is it just box turtles? Do, do, can you get that confirmation from them?
That's what the letter states. So there's only, it's the only identified species by the, by DEEP that we were given.
You got it? That's, it's okay, I just. Paying these guys, I want to earn their money.
Matt and Bob, they may not tell you also.
Right.
They don't think it's going to be impacted.
Right.
Like if there's, you know, a plant that's.
Right, right.
That's not going to be impacted, they won't tell you.
I just wanted to clarify that Russell, he, it may be just box turtles, but it may be others. Yeah, I don't either.
No, no.
And I'm not looking.
I mean, I think we had, Jason, I was with the record, we had three different consultants out there walking the site at different times, and none of them saw anything else that was endangered, you know, during that process, and even relatively newness, but Eric Davidson's also walked it over the last 10 years. So could there be something? I guess it's possible, but nothing that we've seen.
No, I, I earnestly and honestly appreciate you gentlemen and, and your specialties and your, you bringing your expertise to this commission.
One last comment, and again, however, I have open space within the development, and there's 81 acres of open space on this site. I've never, I've never worked on a project that had 81 acres of open space. That's, I think it's like 75 football fields. That is, to ask for more open space than to project, no way.
That's why I wasn't, I wasn't asking you guys.
To exchange the amount of homes.
Because I believe the amount of homes is not too much for the, for the, for the space.
I think we took out a few homes out of the overall area.
Right.
And I, that, I would think that would be.
Wasn't going to get into this one, I guess, like. Yeah, just, that's what I looked at in my report, basically. Sections in my report, but it was dedicated to the analysis of the open space. And there's a couple of things to understand. First of all, like Matt said, 81 acres is a huge offering, of which understandably that under the regulations, there was some portion of open space that had to be offered, but there's at least 31 acres in excess of that. More importantly, the open space that's being offered is protective of the wetlands, both the wetlands within the open space and the wetlands below the open space, which is the wetland state you're concerned about with the stormwater. Because the headwaters to those lower wetlands are up in the open space. So by protecting the open space, not only are you protecting, you know, the landscape contiguous, the wildlife habitat, the forest, all the great things that happen with open space, whether it's up in the wetland, but you're also offering an advanced, additional level of protection for the wetlands below. So that's very valuable, so to, to kind of like, you know, add to Matt's comment. I mean, theoretically, if the applicant who offer five units in, in, in the interior and just call it a day, but the thing is that with this, with this current proposal, he's offering the 81 acres, so that's part, that's part of the whole plan, that his decision is to look at that area, prioritize that area in exchange for to gain the duration that they're proposing. That's basically, and I went into all that in my report.
Well, I, as far as alternatives, I would have appreciated it or liked to see, you know, less houses, but I also recognize that I, I can't challenge it because of the overall plan is, has so much open space. But that's also why I commented that that one option is not prudent. So you give me, you know, you give us a definition of prudent, and then you've put up that, and it's not prudent. The one where there is no open space and it's people over.
Well, and, and just so, when we were looking at the alternatives, because they're kind of in feasible terms, we were looking at it in three buckets. And the, the first thing, the site is whole, right? And so looking at the site as a whole, this is 147 acre site. And I think it's 15.7 of that area is wetlands. The balance is developable land. So some of the alternatives we were trying to show, all right, well, here's an alternative where you utilize the developable land of this site. where you utilize the developable land that this site offers, and, you know, obviously we think our plan is the better one because it, it provides the 81 acres of open space. Then we looked at it for the roadway, because roadway, you know, as Jason kind of highlighted, that's where most of the, the work in the regulated area is. It's 1.1 of the 1.5 acres. So we gave you then an alternative to show, all right, here's another place, another access point, and that one is significantly worse option, plus the fact that the sidelines don't even work there. So there was that bucket. And then we did provide a plan that showed 83 units, and, and what happens when you lower the number of units? And what that was demonstrating, and I think actually Russell just spoke to this, is when you decrease the number of units in this project, it doesn't change a significant impact to the wetlands. And, and that's, you know, what about the regulated area, the regulating activity is what we're looking at, is, is there a significant impact to the wetlands? And there is no change in that because this project, as it's proposed, has no significant impact to the wetlands. So it's really not changing anything with regards to that and what this commission reviews by lowering the number of units. But there is a claim in there, there's, it's 83 units.
Right.
So it's a 16% reduction, you know, a meaningful reduction to the number of units, just to show, you know, how it, 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 it doesn't change anything from significance. Because, I mean, if you're going to have units there, you're going to have drainage there. So I, I mean, that's, there's going to have to be drainage spaces there.
I, I was thinking less homes, not 99 to 87, but 99 to 50 or something, you know, to really show the difference. But I, I get it, and I appreciate it.
It's funny, because I, and I peppered them with these questions to try to play devil's advocate and try to, try to understand that. The thing is that whether it's 99 homes or it's one, it's the same amount of square footage of building floor area within the regulated area because it's zero square feet. They've kept, Jason's done a great job in designing this and keeping all the buildings outside the regulated area. So that's why, you know, it just, it doesn't, it doesn't change the significance of the impact as there is now with the current...
No, I get it, but the difference between 87 and 99 is not, not a lot of extra sewage and other things as opposed to 99 versus 50. That's, that's where you would see a, a big difference, and then you would come out with something in between if you needed to, but we don't need to. We don't need to belabor the point. I just, I'm good, thanks.
Anybody else online have any questions or comments? Anybody else online? You, if you'd like to say something?
No.
You're good?
I'm good.
All right, then, you know, motion to continue this?
One thing I would note, sorry, if we continue, I think it's the 27th is the, is the next day of the hearing. I think one thing, and I could talk to staff maybe tomorrow about it, is our timelines and whether we are getting to the end of the extension period. And so it may, that's pretty much work for, for y'all, but it may require a special meeting or sub-meeting before the, if there was an additional meeting beyond the 27th, to be able to make it before the end of the extension period. But maybe we could talk tomorrow and make sure we're on the same page.
All right, okay. All right, so we'll get some clarification on the dates.
Sure.
For a moment, we're going to continue this to the next meeting.
I make a motion to continue it to next meeting.
A second?
We have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. All right, so we will continue us to the next meeting. Thank you guys for...
Thank you.
Thanks, gentlemen.
All right, so I guess IWC agent activities report. No activities?
Yeah, I don't have a comment. I will next meeting though, but...
Okay. General discussion. Do we have the agent report?
Nothing tonight.
No permitted use of rights, okay? Minutes?
Actually, don't think that I received minutes from the prior meeting.
Um, you got them in the last packet from the last meeting, maybe that's when you got them?
Okay.
Yeah, and I can distribute them again?
Okay, that'd be great.
And you can just...
Is that great? All right. Regulation Amendment Committee?
We have to, we have to make a subcommittee because there are, I think there are a couple of different things in the regs that need to be looked at, so...
Same thing with Public Outreach Committee?
For that.
Okay, well, then I need a motion to adjourn.
We just acknowledge Rick and his work for all of us. I know he's, he's been extremely helpful.
Thank you for holding our hand in the process.
Yes.
Appreciate it.
Yep, my pleasure. It's been a quick journey.
Yep.
Good pleasure.
Thank you.
Believe us. 44 years, time to...
Welcome to coming to sit down.
Let's have you did that.
When I was in my 30s, it was fun.
Training wheels are off for you guys now.
All right, need a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Adjourns, we have a second.
A second?
All right.
All in favor? Aye.
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 Go home.